I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi Sharon. Ready to hit us?
I'll be short and sweet here.
Okay.
There we go.
Jim, it's just ten years on board, I was here, my phone just flew by. I've been here with the entire contract. It is basically the same contract we've had in the past ten years, except it updated the equipment. We both have got new equipment. And instead of twelve thousand, we paid thirteen thousand a year. So, you have more as good.
Like the motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
We'll just pick, oh man, can I just pick this up tomorrow from New York?
Yeah, I sent this out to everybody prior, but I can get it signed and I will get you a copy tomorrow if that works for you.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks Sharon.
Thanks Sharon.
Good evening.
See ya. Ken Olson's not gonna be here, you wanna wait and do your thing Jeff?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll have Brandy.
Um, I don't have, I just have a couple things, uh, claims are there if you haven't had a chance to look at.
Yeah.
The amount of two eight one seventeen forty six.
Let's see here. What was a heated hose machine rental for? Seal master, what was that?
That's a crack sealer.
Okay, the crack sealer.
Material.
Well, we probably used that, it just finally got paid, okay, okay, uh. So, did we just do the final installment, Brandy, of the three payments for the skid steer, I saw we just paid, uh, uh.
I don't know if it's, this is the last one or next year's last.
Then we do one first in nineteen and twenty and twenty one?
I just got an invoice for it too.
Yeah.
Today in the mail, thirty-three thousand a piece.
Yeah, we just, you, that's what this is.
Three years, oh, I didn't know she included, I just got it in the mail today.
Yeah, so I'm just curious, is that our last, I'm, is it, do you know if it's our last?
We got that in twenty.
We got it in twenty nineteen.
Nineteen in January.
So I'm thinking, we did a payment then, twenty-one, twenty-two, it's probably the last.
This year will be the last, it was three years, I believe on that lease.
I think so, I hope it is.
It was three years for sure.
So that, uh, so I guess that's good news folks, we just made our last payment on that, uh. Let's see, we paid our, uh, Indiana municipal electric dues. Good there, uh, what else we got going on here? What happened to the gas tank for the jet truck?
Oh, so, interesting thing, it has a liner on the inside of it.
Yeah.
It was coated with something, and this is a fairly common problem with that particular fuel tank, is the lining starts to come apart and jams up all your fuel lines and everything like that, so.
It's diesel, right?
It, it's a new fuel tank.
Yeah. Huh, well, okay, I thought that was, uh. Got the pressure washer?
Yep, the fellows liked it a lot.
Good. Disinfected our water tanks north and south, you just pour that in there, I mean, what are you doing?
For the.
Disinfect the water tanks?
No, I think that was for, uh, was that SUEZ? No.
No, it's, uh, utility service. It was, uh, utility service company washout disinfection of south plant tank and north.
That would've been our, was that our plan out?
Oh, SUEZ did?
Did, oh. Was it about ten K?
No, it's twenty-five hundred each.
Okay, five K.
Okay, uh. All right, well, there's just a lot of interesting stuff on this one, I, I moved to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, let's see, I have the resolution, Nikki approved this, I printed your copy that you reviewed from Cindy Todd.
Oh, yeah.
USDA grant application.
I actually edited that, and yeah, added some things, yeah, it's fine with me, it's fine with the town.
This will be the resolution twenty twenty-two, the first one for this year, so dash one.
It just gives Cindy Todd and Brandy, uh, the authority to carry out anything needed to file the grant request as to that.
And that's for us, the study?
Study, yes.
And twenty-five percent match, I believe?
I don't know the specifics on that, I don't know if it says that in there.
I don't think this, I think this is, like you said, just the agreement allowing us to make.
Right.
Any other.
Subject to the town board president.
I'll say it.
So basically, he has to look at, say it's okay, and then Brandy and Cindy and he'll figure it out.
David, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, sorry, I'm caught, sorry.
Did you make a motion?
I did, I seconded.
I'm sorry, I was silent. All in favor?
Moving right along.
I did, uh, I did have my December bank recs in there, I needed to get these done before I can close out the end of the year, so I have all of these here balanced, um, if I could just get signatures and approve along, all of our December banks. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's it.
Okay, as soon as Jeff gets back, we'll.
Oh, no.
Hopefully get some.
Can I go ahead and get this, whatever you guys wanna do on this invoice then, for this underground? Um, do you wanna make a decision on a percentage? Or how do you wanna handle that?
What is it?
Two hundred grand per cent.
To charge.
Percentage of what?
Materials.
For materials, all I have is equipment.
Well, we haven't passed, uh.
Rates, so.
Well, you know how many feet of wire you're gonna put in, you know what that would be?
Yeah, we, we, we know what the cost of the material's gonna be, generally we go a little bit above that, just to take care of handling and, and shipping charges. Brett says generally we, we charge about thirty cents extra, uh.
Per foot?
Uh, per foot. We, we, we don't wanna make.
Well, we're not trying to make.
We're not trying to.
Right.
You know, make a killing, but we don't wanna lose money on it either.
Right, well, I mean, three percent, five percent, I don't know.
Well.
Well, what's it cost per foot?
Of wire?
It's, I think the last was two twelve now, is what I was given. But it was two fifty at one point, I, I just, you guys just need to tell me how much.
Cost of wire plus X, so many cents per foot, yeah, that, that, that's, that's simple.
Except they said per cent's better.
Hard to believe it's going down price.
So, this is just gonna be for this specific project, or are we wanting to adopt something permanently, Jeff?
See, I think you'd probably want something permanent.
Eventually, but if I could get this invoice, this particular gentleman would like to get this paid.
Okay.
Percentage of what?
It's the cost.
The cost of per foot of the wire.
Or if he just, I mean, he wanted to do a standard.
Well, I don't know, somebody already said per cent.
I said three percent.
Well, that's a lot more than three percent.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Send a motion?
That's a lot more than three percent.
That's a lot more than three percent.
Somebody got it?
Thirty, then it's five percent?
What we have been doing. So that's, if they're estimating thirty cents for shipping and handling, and three percent isn't gonna get close to that.
No, it would be, be much lower, uh.
Twenty-nine percent.
Well, he just grabbing numbers out of the air, but we need to come up with something that's rational.
So where it started this project? Or is it done, or where are we?
How many feet of wire are you putting?
Completed.
He wants to pay the bill, and I do not, I can't invoice him for.
Do we know how many feet of wire are putting?
So why don't we just have Jeff create an invoice on this project, and then on future projects, we can have something put together, it's more. I mean, Jeff just creates a written invoice that we can pass along, maybe.
Okay.
That's just a suggestion, I mean, but then we can adopt a specific resolution that adopts all the different charges.
Well, that's what we need to do.
As long as it's not less than what we charged.
Uh, yeah, um, yeah.
So it's two hundred and twelve foot?
Two hundred and twelve foot.
No, two dollars and twelve cents a foot.
Two twelve cents.
At a hundred and forty feet.
Twelve times a hundred and forty?
Or, I mean, maybe you put that bill together, and then we adopt something, or however you wanna go.
I don't care, it's.
If you're looking two hundred and ninety-six dollars and a cent.
If we can get that taken care of, then we can adopt the formal policy.
Yeah.
Talking three twenty-five.
Ten percent would be twenty-nine dollars, would put you almost up to three twenty-five.
What percent?
Ten percent would be twenty-nine dollars. I like ten percent, I, it seemed to be rational to cover the, uh, additional cost.
So then that means when we go to make a pile or the whatever, we're gonna do it, it has to be ten percent?
One more.
Well, we'll, we'll have to review it, and Jeff comes in and says it's not enough someday, we'll have to change it then.
I'd just say we'll do a resolution, adopt then a formal policy as to what everyone does.
Come up real often?
I don't think it does a whole lot, but is it fair to just say if I do ten percent of material costs and you guys vote on that?
Yes, I like that.
Can you make that?
I'll move.
All in favor?
Alright, perfect, thanks.
Is that it?
And then just turn it off. You guys just tell me what you want on that.
That's it. You ready to step up Jeff?
Yeah. Pull that way.
I'll, I'll try and mine off.
I did too.
I just copied this. Oh, did you give me this? Oh no.
Oh, she, she sort of got that, okay. Let me go ahead and get this to you then. Thank you. Alright. At least while our treatment plan been in conversation with Bruce, we're having some issues with the clarifier, uh, over there. Troy, you wanna, you wanna talk about a little bit of that, or you want me to?
Yeah.
Go ahead, you probably go more down than I do.
The, uh, one of the dry guns went out, uh, week before when it was really, really, really cold out. We thought it might've been froze, because we had the company Maddox come out and look at it. And, uh, he, I mean, it's, they, they're gonna get a price on a new one, and then they're supposed to give us a price on rebuilding the existing one. Right now, we're bypassing that one, just using one clarifier, which is five, as long as we don't have rain. Um, so we're really pushing to get the prices back from that.
So, Paul Park, what are you talking for one of those?
Um.
What are you getting for one of those?
I'm gonna say.
I don't have any idea.
I think it'll be less than ten thousand.
Okay, well, that's, that's, you know, scary as some things we've.
Or might be around there.
Well.
After new or real?
I, I think that should be, I don't know.
Well.
I just got ten percent, and it's three thousand, I don't think it's gonna.
Yeah, it's less than fifty, I mean, some of these things we get hit with down, they're huge, so, so.
It's still all the original drives from those twenty-si- twenty-seven years ago. So.
You gotta let it use up in twenty-two years, so.
Yeah.
So it's the motor?
Uh, it's actually like the, the gear drive.
The gear drive that.
The clarifier, the thing that goes around it.
Yeah, the gear drive. Okay.
So, as soon as we get that, we'll get with Jeff. We'll need, we'll need to act on that pretty quick.
I don't want to.
Well.
Shouldn't we go ahead and say?
Well, I move, we.
Get it when it comes in, as long as it's less than fifteen thousand.
Well, I, I, yeah. But if Jeff, if Jeff thinks it's ridiculous, he'll let us know, otherwise, I mean, we, we do it, we have to have the thing. Fortunately, we aren't in rainy weather right now.
And we're not, we're bypassing a rebuild?
Well, we're gonna look into cost, uh.
So you're gonna give them approval not to exceed then, is that what the plan is?
Well, you wanna do that, not exceed what then?
I said, I said, well, then I'll say twenty thousand.
We're meeting in two weeks, I mean, does it need to, will we have numbers by then on a rebuild?
I hope so.
And what it costs?
Yeah, we hope to have numbers by the end of the week.
Okay.
So, real quick though, I mean, so you're saying, it's got a pretty good lifespan, twenty years. So, the one that we're on, using right now, how old is it?
It's the same.
Maybe we've done with the new and the rebuild.
Why don't you see if they can.
Get us a better price to get to.
What's the price for two new ones? Cash, cash.
Well, either that or one new one, or one, see if they'll make a deal on a new one and a rebuild or something.
They can rebuild the one we got.
It's half the price if it's getting.
Yeah, I'll do some checking tomorrow.
Okay.
We'll undo it.
So, is there a motion on the floor for?
There was, yes.
Okay, is there a second?
Now we're buying two?
Hmm?
Are we buying two?
Well, I mean, we've gotta make a deal.
If one has gone out and they're the same age, the likelihood of the other one going out is probably.
I understand, but I think your motion was just for one and not to exceed a certain price, right?
I said now, I'm amending it to looking into buying at least one and possibly a new rebuild. As long as it doesn't exceed.
Well, do we wanna rebuild though?
Rebuild.
Just voting on it in two weeks, and we know money.
Well, fact of the matter is, we gotta have one, right now, so.
I'll see what the warranty is on the rebuild too.
We'll, we'll work it out, and we'll keep you posted.
Okay, so can we have a motion for a certain amount of money not to exceed, or?
Or you could give the president the authority to sign.
That's a good idea.
Based upon his best judgment, I mean.
I'll make that motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Good, that way we're not locked in.
So I have that recorded, that you will get with, somebody will get with Dave on a price, and he'll give you approval, and then all, somebody will let me know.
So, I'm almost looking out for you.
Yeah, thanks, thank you, Troy, appreciate it. I said appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, I remember two as a community crossings grant, and, uh, this one is still a little bit more fluid than I would like, just because on some of the engineering on post office alley and, uh, the.
What's it called down here? Sugar, what's it?
Sugar Tree Alley.
Sugar Tree, okay.
And it was actually, that runs through there, so I've got it listed as Sugar Tree Alley P O, Stanford Post Office. On this sheet. And if I can find what to do, but yeah, this sheet.
It's always been called Sugar Tree Alley, we just named that recently.
No, it's from like, a map from like nineteen twelve or something.
It must've had sugar trees.
We talked about renaming it once, but anyway.
Back before the post office was actually there.
Yep, so, so here's what I'm thinking, as far as, uh, if we do everything that we wanna do, it comes out six hundred and thirty-six thousand, which is a little bit more than what we want, so I've kinda played fast and loose with some of the numbers there. Uh, Anderson, I'm pretty comfortable with a estimate of, uh, hundred and seven thousand, and that includes about three hundred and thirty feet of new ADA sidewalk.
What, Jeff, what?
But it does not include curving gutter.
What, we, 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 we have a contract with Roger.
Yep.
Uh, that's for, well, surveying design.
Yep.
I mean, is he gonna have that done before we?
It'll, it'll be close, but, but what I'm really needing for him is, is kinda the ballpark of what the cost estimate would be. And he's gonna get me the, the, um, the curving gutter is really where the engineering comes in at.
Well, how far would that three hundred and thirty feet go?
Down to, uh, the entrance to the, yeah, just on the other side of that, where, uh, what is it, not like Pines Road, or?
Yeah.
Back to the Pines.
Did he, has he already looked at that, did he look at what the, I thought I saw an email on that.
He, he thinks we got room.
We have enough right away?
Yeah.
Okay.
Would we be putting it on the side that's in town? Or the side that's out of town?
What do we own out there?
Well, I, I think we're, we're good.
I think we're good out there.
It's ours, yeah. We're good there, so that's. It's kind of a natural break point, because a lot of the traffic, it's gonna be coming through there, especially on foot, it's gonna be coming from the apartments, so that'll give them, you know, get them out of the middle road with their little buggies and things like that. And I think it would just be a good safe thing, so, that's a very minimum. We're looking at a hundred and seven for, uh, uh, doing the whole street mill and fill, plus three hundred and thirty foot of new ADA sidewalk.
And we just pick up there where the sidewalk on Forty-One stops coming across the bank?
On the north side?
On the north side.
And I assume that strip of ground there with, uh.
Dollar General.
Dollar General, you know, there's a big issue there with their trucks pulling in and out there, I, I, I.
Plus their drainage, I mean, it stains in water all the time, is, would this help that in?
I don't know if it would help it necessarily, now, if we did curbs and gutters, it probably would.
So would you, I mean, you're not considered putting sidewalk across their entrances, right?
No.
Okay, no, no.
Just in the, uh, the easement areas where the grassy areas that are salt.
Grass.
Well, we have.
Anyway, on, on the second column.
So we're not gonna curb their entrance to our sidewalk then?
West Rainbow and.
Cause they're gonna run over into your sidewalk if you don't have a curb from the street to the end of your sidewalk.
But it's gonna have those little new oil pads that kind of slope down to the.
I guess my concern was more so, usually you'll curb it into the sidewalk like that, and so they, when they turn in, they can't cut the turn and run over into your sidewalk, is what I was concerned about, maybe you could put posts in or something then.
That's probably a good idea.
More worried about their semi truck running over your, your, uh.
Brandy, your concrete?
Of course, their semis have run over the poles before.
I, well, maybe put it to the point where it's gonna do some significant damage to their semi. But that might be more cost effective than put in a curb, I guess, is what I'd say, if you put like a steel post or something. Make sure it's like marked.
I'd put probably at least a six or eight inch in, buried pretty deep and.
Baller type thing?
Yeah, full, full of concrete, cause those ADA ramps are cheap. And chances of someone to tell them.
They're gonna cut it, and they're gonna run over it, and they're gonna leave, and then.
So, in the second column, uh, I kinda took out a couple things to kinda make it meet our budget a little bit more. East Rainbow and West Rainbow, I can wait on those two. Parkway, I can probably wait on a little bit, North Michigan, I can probably, uh, wait on a little bit. And that kicks it down to four sixty-five, three sixty-nine, which is kind of in the ballpark range that we were looking at. Uh, so if you have any adds or deletions to this, uh, potential project list, um, you know, let me know your, your thoughts.
No, it looks, it has two major, major issues we've been dealing with forever, that, 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 the post office alley, it'd be great to have that thing fixed. Uh, again, he's doing some engineering work still to do on that, cause I mean, we're talking curbs, are we talking curbs and gutters on that?
Or?
Uh.
We're talking, what we're thinking about doing is coming in and, uh, an inverse crown.
Yeah.
Okay, with a negative slope, and, uh, running storm drain down through the middle, have the three catch basins along the length of it, and the final one being down at the very bottom.
So we're talking about actually digging up the alley?
Yeah, it's total reconstruction.
Total reconstruction on that?
Total reconstruction.
That's why I saw most of much as Andrew, how, on Anderson, were you gonna repave, how far down, where down?
All the way down.
All the way down to Virginia?
Skip the park pass through the house.
Yeah.
All the way down to, uh, the bottom of Rainbow.
Okay.
All the way down to the bottom of Rainbow.
Okay.
Where it turns to go on Rainbow.
Where it turns on the Martin off Rainbow?
No, I'll be on that.
Oh, okay.
Oh, you're going all the way down to East Anderson? Holy cow, yeah, in the trailer?
Yeah, yeah, all the way down to the bottom of it, to where Anderson actually, yeah.
Yeah, for postal and FedEx, that's East Anderson.
Yeah, oh, is it?
Oh, yeah, there's a lot of confusion out there on deliveries.
You're not considering widening that street though, are you?
No, no, we're, we're just doing mill and fill. Kinda like what we're doing.
I mean, on the east end, yeah, okay.
Well, you know, it, it's within what we've got budgeting, it leaves us a little extra in case.
Just in case.
Uh.
And this is due to twenty-eight?
Yeah, I've, I've got the applications, uh, pretty much done, as far as, um, you know, I'll have to do three separate projects because they're three different types of projects, the various streets like Indiana Papa John, Kirkpatrick, South Michigan. All those will be under a general HMA, uh, mill and resurface. The Anderson will be HMA mill and resurface plus, plus sidewalks. And then the P O, or the Sugar Tree Alley will be a reconstruction plus drainage, so, that's kinda what we're looking at. Yay?
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, uh, just for your information, input is back on site, they've already replaced some poles on the thirty-six. Specifically down by the depot, that one is done, and, uh, over by the old Baptist church by the daycare, that one's done. They also got two more down by Benjamin's that they're currently working on, they just got that third one set tonight. Kate called me earlier just to say that he was wrapping that up. And I met with Dan today, uh, to go over what we're going to do in the future as far as our pole replacements. One thing he did mention was looking at, uh, possibly a project, scoping out what would take force to, uh, do underground on Virginia.
Well, you know, I, I brought it up, I, I always get some, uh, uh, interesting comments on, but, doggone it, that, we, we, every year, for decades, that's always been an issue.
We discussed this earlier, and somebody was supposed to come up with some numbers.
Well.
And, and that's kind of where he's at, is looking at that, so, I just wanted to throw that out there too.
Good idea.
Uh, cemetery report, these are Mark's numbers, uh, that he gives me.
That annual, those are annual?
Annually, and it's, it's pretty consistent through the years, uh, he may be up just a little bit this year. Then item number five, uh, this is what we were talking about earlier. Some of the projects, and I'll leave this on for, uh, future board meetings too, just to update it, just to try and keep all this thing, all these things straight in my mind. Yeah, the water project, the surveys are complete on Cindy's end, I think, uh, just waiting to know what the next step is on, yeah.
So that's, that's the one that we already had the P E R for?
Yep, we've already got the P E R, and I think we were looking at, uh, what's that?
And that's what we're talking about, going, applying to S R F, but then denying that and going after the SWIFT.
I think so, yeah.
Money.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Right, uh, Forty-One North sewer expansion, uh, really no change in status there.
Brad updated on that in my report.
Okay, Scott's has located cleanouts next to the building, though nobody was really aware of. So, uh, Doug is gonna go out this week with their maintenance, uh, man and mister Norris, and they're running cameras down through that end, just to get them peace of mind that they've got a good lateral line through our sewers. South Market Street.
Hey Jeff, on that, have you talked to, uh, Brian Hood lately?
Not lately.
Okay, um, we agreed, didn't we, to take care of the tap there, I mean.
Yeah.
So we're gonna hook on behind their tank, on the west side of the tank, and, and we'll, we'll take that lateral to, you know, to the tap. Okay, well, I know he had an email about it, asked me, I told him I'd bring it up, so, I mean, we did agree to that, correct?
We, we certainly don't have a problem with that, leaving the tap these and everything like that.
Well, and that, and something else, if, if we have to, if we have to, uh, take care of that tank, it's not a big deal. I think that tank's maybe like a two thousand, maybe twenty-four hundred gallon. Uh, I mean, it'd be a matter of pumping it out, filling it full of sand, you know, caving the top in, so, we just want to be.
Yeah, yeah, whatever you guys need to do on that, just, just let me know.
As long as Nathan, I, I, him and I have talked about it, so I think, I think we're good, so, alright.
South Market Street.
Yeah.
Local quarterly report is due, I've got that submitted again for review, and, uh, one of the things on, on the South Market project that, that Ken asked me about was, uh, whether or not, um, Maxwell is going to be able to shoot, give us elevations on some of their ASBILs. And I sent Tim a, a email on that, and I haven't got any response from him, and my guess is, for it to be really accurate, I'd almost rather have structure points shoot those points themselves, uh, as, as we kinda know, there's not a lot going on there according to what the original specs were. So, I'll, uh, I'll have something for you on that, but, um, South Market is moving along. I'll have more information after our meeting with Endot, but I think, I think we're okay.
December on that, is that on bids or what, November or December?
Uh, letting date for that was supposed to be December, Endot realigned some of their letting dates, so now, I wanna say it's January fifteenth, point, point three is the actual date for bids. And, keep in mind, that's pending that they're able to do all the right away stuff, uh, down through there, so, keep your fingers crumpled, yeah, I don't, yeah. Ken sends out those, uh, updates on the Market Street project that I think you all get.
Packages will be available for that though in September, correct?
For what?
For South Market.
The bid packets?
Yeah.
I think so.
Oh, good.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, there's a whole process that they have to go through and know how that is. Ken was gonna be here, of course, to talk about the Jefferson Street project and some of the things that, uh, that they've got going on. I know one of the, the things that he was gonna mention is being able to have, uh, some kind of document on the. For the easements on both sides of the road. Uh, and, and I don't know exactly what kind of agreement was needed to use the term. I'll have to probably talk to Nick about that, from the owners just allowing us if we need to, to scooch on over a little bit, we can. I don't think it's gonna be an issue, uh, anywhere.
We're not changing any design on that, other than probably on this, the south ends where the state took care of things, right?
Yeah, and, and, and it's not really adding thing, it's just eliminating stuff.
Doing away with the bump outs, do we show that or?
I think the bump outs are still in, but the, uh, we don't have to do the ADA.
Right.
Ramps, and we don't, we're not gonna do the ramps down at the, uh, down by High Street.
So we're not, I mean, we're not changing the sidewalk design on the west side, on the north end?
Uh, yeah, I don't think so, now, he did ask about a couple of, uh, uh, I guess you call accommodations for. Uh, street vendors in that area, since we do shut that street down. One of them was maybe access to water, and another was an access to electricity, which I thought was a pretty good idea. And, uh, I think that was in the email that came out in the past too.
Right.
And I didn't receive any negative feedback on that. He also has, uh, they're gonna have to do a, a little bit of a supplemental on that, obviously, and I think you had a. The contract, and I can't remember the dollar figure.
Well, yeah, I got. We've got this amendment too, I, I, I don't know that, uh, does David, somebody sign this, probably, don't they?
Now, Ken told me specifically that work is going to proceed. He, since he wasn't able to be here tonight, if you wanted to wait on signing that, but.
Well. The, uh, I, I went over, ran the numbers, I actually emailed Ken this morning to clarify, cause I can't, some of the stuff just gets confusing. Anyway, the additional cost of complete design work's ten thousand dollars, we have pretty much paid for all the design work. So it's additional ten thousand for that, the inspection cost, which we've, I don't know how many people were involved with that, we talked about that.
Yeah, the construction inspection, uh, we're only going to contract with them for about three days a week, as opposed to five. I think the size of that project is much more manageable, and depending on what takes place at the, uh, the sewer expansion project. Uh, there may be the opportunity to combine construction and inspection on that.
And then the other, the other cost is the unknown increase in, in.
Materials.
True.
Yeah.
So those are three items.
My recommendation would be let Nick take a look at it.
Oh, you got.
I'd say go.
You didn't get an email?
I have an email, I get a lot of emails.
Okay.
They, they, their emails are.
They're wrong, aren't they?
Okay.
So that's what's going on with Jefferson Street. Uh, Jackson Voorhees, Roger's still working on the, the report for that, and I'm, I'm sure he will be finishing it up soon. I'll try to get a front day from him for the next meeting, so I can update you guys on it. Water extension project, I had a phone call with Roger and Cindy, and, uh, Park and Dave scheduled. Roger missed the initial one, so I just, uh, went ahead and, and had a quick conference call with Cindy. Roger go over the highlights of what we've been looking on for that. He's gonna give Cindy, uh, cost estimates on, uh, PE reports. Number one, at the twenty-five thousand, uh, foot view of what it would take overall. The feasibility of getting all the way to probably Collinsburg, uh, obviously doing this in phases. And number two, more specifically looking at getting it to L A B, and the next phase being, uh, Belmore. Those two are gonna be a lot more specific, because we feel that those are a little bit more, using the term media, but, uh, more timely.
And that's one we're, we're going after this USDA grant.
Yes.
To see if we can help pay for studies.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and Cindy's working on that. Water extension project, I already talked about that, Jackson Jackson Building, we got the riff off, there was a lot of metal, but guys did a great job in, in taking that off. The bid documents are sent out to the papers, the bid opening will be at five o'clock on, uh, February twenty-first, our board meeting.
What are you doing with the metal?
Jeff, if I'm late that day, don't open until I get here, the statute mandates I have to be present. I don't have to be the one that opens them, I have to be in the room.
Okay, we can do that.
I'll try to be here on time, but if I'm five minutes late or something.
Okay, we got you.
What are we doing with the metal?
Well, that remains to be seen, I, I tell you what, if, uh, if Mark can't use it over at the cemetery, I know we can use it over at our place. To probably build some more lean twos and get some of our other equipment, at least, if not totally out of the elements, uh, at least.
You guys knocked that out pretty quick, didn't you?
Took about four hours, uh, Cody and Tony and John and Doug.
Brett.
Brett was there too, wasn't he?
Did you all have your partnership?
Yep, yes, we did, yes, we, I guarantee we did. Yeah, the guys did a great job on that, so, thank you. Cody has, uh, a late addition, actually, I forgot to put it on there, but he had a request for some items. And it comes up to, uh, a total of twenty-three ninety-six, I, I think my limit is twenty-five, but. Wanted to go ahead and, and shoot it to you anyway, uh, we've, we've got some, uh, heaters that we wanna put down in the well. Well pits, they're electric heaters, for about six hundred and six bucks each, we'd like three of them for a total of one thousand eight hundred forty-eight twenty-four. This is from Grainger, also some abrasive cutoff wheels, uh, totaling about two hundred and twenty-three dollars. And a quartered ankle grinder for three hundred and twenty-four, uh, dollars, all of these from Grainger. And so it's just, I know it's under my threshold, but it's close enough that at least wanted you guys to, to know what we were doing.
So the heaters in the well, what's that all about?
Just to maintain a constant, uh, more constant temperature in there, so you don't get the condensation or, in this case, the freezing. Of, of some of the condensation, which is not bad, I know Cody's done a lot of work, uh, in the well pits, trying to bring things up to some. He discovered that a couple of the sump pumps, uh, that were in there were not operating and needed some attention, so. Uh, Cody and the guys pulled them up, and he was able to disassemble one of them and get it running again himself. And, uh, the other one, Cody says, it ain't gonna happen, so we'll be replacing one of those too.
Cody, do you have anything down on that?
No.
The heater for the electronics in the well.
Okay. Yeah, water and electronics, not a good question. I'll second.
All in favor, Dave? All in favor?
All in favor? Sorry, I was busy again.
And that's what I've got for tonight.
Good, thank you. Alrighty.
Got notifications in Indiana Law Department Training Board, there's some changes over there, uh, starting. July first, they're raising the cost to a thousand dollars per student for, uh, tier one class, which is the basic class. They also told us that, uh, this, or the class is gonna be extended to sixteen weeks now. To accommodate some additional. Training. And also because of COVID, they're not allowing, uh, students to go home. Uh, so that will have an increased cost of evening meals, which they have been doing, so that's part of the reason for the raising the fees. Grant applications for, uh. Body cameras are out from the state of Indiana. And, uh, the application deadline is February eighteenth, so it just opened up this week. I started filling the information out, and it's, uh, a new grant from the Indiana Department of Homeland Security. But provides, uh, eight hundred dollars per full-time officer for body worn cameras. However, if a department already has body worn cameras or purchased them, then they only give you four hundred dollars and you'll be, uh. Considered secondary funding, so if they have enough departments to use up all the money. On new cameras, then they won't have any for the secondary, but it also, uh. May mention in there about being like a twenty-five percent match, so. Our body worn cameras are coming up on the end of their five-year maintenance agreement. If you'd like me to, I can apply, finish the grant application for the four hundred dollars, which should be, uh, twenty-four hundred dollars for us right now. Which should be able to buy us a few more of the cameras that, uh, we have, just to extend the life. Of the cameras in the program, so that if, if a camera goes bad, then we'll take one of the new ones and put it in service. We can't do that right now, because, um, we have licenses for those cameras that, to upload. To our, um, maintenance program. So currently, uh, on the program that we have, they sent us, uh, some additional cameras at the midway point of our contract. And we've got those locked up in the closet, and we've, uh, when we have one go bad, then we've exchanged it for newer. If it wasn't under warranty still. So I just need to know if you want me to continue with that one or not. So he gave us twenty-four hundred dollars and, uh. It may be a twenty-five percent match.
Hey Randy, I was, I was standing in the courtroom and the county was talking to the prosecutor about getting those body cameras to automatically download everything. And they were gonna talk about it later, so you might wanna ask the prosecutor what he ended up doing, cause if they're doing it for the county, maybe they do it for you also. But I, I wasn't privy to the private discussion, I just heard him ask it.
And are supposed to do that also, um, it's supposed to have access, they advertise them now that has access for, to the prosecutor and the court. So that, um, we don't have to make copies of them for them guys, um, so.
That saves you guys time, I assume.
I gotta contact the company and see if they can, um, change that, but I didn't think he had the funding to.
I don't, I, I didn't hear the answer, I just heard him ask, so.
The last time he didn't have the funding to do all that, but.
Yeah.
I also have a, a grant application started for Firehouse Subs Foundation to purchase new body armor, which is due for replacement. When I was hired April of sixteen, we already had a grant, uh, that somebody had filed for, I think it was Jeff Raymond. We were fitted in July of two thousand sixteen. For new vests, and we received those probably between September and November in different allotments. So the recommended, uh, warranty expiration is five years on those, so they would have just expired. And that's if you, um. They don't have an expiration date on them, they recommend five to ten year replacement. There is a, uh, Indiana statute that says that we have to provide for vests. Now, I understand that was brought up at the, after the meeting last time, and that, uh, you said you go ahead and get those, uh, ordered. However, I do have the grant application started, we also, uh, Chris Fisher has, um. Another location that funds vests in Terre Haute, that we wanted to research. I have a, uh. A quote for twenty vests, which is seventeen thousand nine hundred and forty dollars. But if you order and pay for those now, then you're not gonna get the grants or reimbursements for it, so, um. That's up to you, if you want me to proceed with that, or you want us to just get them ordered, that's up to you.
Well, are we out of compliance on anything?
We're right at the expiration point. We are not, uh, but there is no expiration on the vests. They recommend five to ten years in the documentation. But things that, that affect that is, uh, if you wear it constantly. Weather, sunlight, all of that, uh, affects the.
Right, well, I just don't want anything bad to happen, I, I, period, but, I, I mean, I definitely don't want any issues, you know.
Do you have that paperwork, Randy, for, when the vest came in? Do you mind if I look at it?
Sure.
So how many do we need, do we need, it sounds like they were all purchased.
I don't think we need twenty of them, I think there's, uh, and, and something else that wasn't, I don't think told you. Every, every new person that's come on, I've gotten vests, new vests for purchased by someone else, like the prosecutor's office. Now, he can't afford to buy twenty new vests, but I think we're probably looking at more like, uh, seventeen or eighteen.
What?
Hold on a minute. Park and they are going similar for so. So I've got the documentation from the different vest manufacturers, now, there is no, um. Expiration date, now, it also says that, like, uh, the date of manufacturer was, uh, two thousand fifteen of May. But they weren't issued to us and, and received from the company until late two thousand sixteen. So when, when you receive those and you send in a warranty card, that's when the five-year warranty starts on them.
So what's the status on the grant and what?
Actually, I had, uh, a guy that was supposed to come and, and bring us the samples, and, uh, he did email me the quote, that's the one I have. But, um. He's also the guy that came and measured us the last time, but he wanted to bring us new stuff to show us that it's lighter weight and not as bulky. But he got COVID, and he was supposed to come tomorrow, and he called me today and said he's still testing positive, so. He's probably next week could be here. But normally, like the last time we did, we had the guys come, we had the guy come here and he measures everybody to get the, uh, proper fit on. Now, there's things that you can find on, online or Facebook that have different prices and different quotes. A level three vest is the top of the line, um, stops all. Heavy-duty rounds and everything. What they suggest is, uh, the level two vests with these level three plates, and they've got new plates that aren't as heavy.
And we also purchased back then. What do you have now, Randy?
We have level two vests.
With plates?
Yes, where they have some plates in, but, which increases the protection of them. We also have active shooter kits in the vehicles, which, um, each vehicle has. That guys can put on if they have time, when they're going to something that they expect to be gunplay. Those, uh, have not expired, and they are, um, heavy-duty, but they weigh a lot.
Well, what's your recommendation?
My recommendation would be to, um, continue with this research in it for the. For the grant application, I mean, if you think you got the money. That's up to you.
Well, we don't have the money, but we have no choice, we can't have you out running around without protective clothing, we have to take it from somewhere. Uh, well, which grant are you talking about, Randy?
There was one through Firehouse Subs, and there's another, uh, plenty in Terre Haute or Biden County that.
That Chris has been working for.
Yes.
So you, you don't believe the paperwork indicates a replacement period from the manufacturer then? Not that you've seen anyway?
It just says that their warranty stops at the end of five years. They recommend that you, you know, that the lifetime of a vest is five to ten years.
Okay, cause it, the statute just says that, well, actually.
That you have to provide them.
Right.
But it doesn't say you have to provide one every two years or five years or.
What it, it just says according to the replacement period recommended by the manufacturer, the body armor.
Right.
That's why I was asking if it said that, because if it says that, then we're bound by whatever it says, but if it doesn't say that, then it's.
What does the warranty that you keep referring to cover?
Replacement of the vest, Randy.
Well, I mean.
Manufacturer. Manufacturer. Not, no vest is gonna man, is gonna warranty your life.
Okay, they're just warranting the, the manufacturing of the vest that came apart or something like that.
If you had a tear or something that showed like it was a defect on it, then yes.
Okay.
So.
So we're out of, we're out really. If it was November sixteen.
Well, we're out the warranty. I don't know about the protecting of the, the vest, because as Randy was saying, you know, based on the reward every day out in the sun as opposed to, I mean, there's different variables that could affect the degradation.
And I can forward you all that in email if you want.
Warranty would just be working.
It'd be my preference. I just get to read the thing. I, I just, because if something happens to one of y'all and it's ordered in a way where it can be construed a different way, that, that would be concerning, especially in today's environment with law enforcement and what you guys deal with.
Well, how about we do this? How about we table this? You continue with the, with your grant process, get him the paperwork, and we'll talk about it next meeting. I mean, does that sound?
Sounds reasonable to me.
Everybody agree with that?
I mean, it's gonna take weeks to get those vests anyway, right, Randy?
You comfortable with that, Bill?
I guess.
I mean, if you have an opinion, I, I'd like to hear it.
I guess I, I think most of us would like to, to get our vests as, you know, soon as we can.
So you're speaking for how many people here now?
Most of the ones I've talked to would like to have a vest.
Well, in other words, they're not feeling very safe. They feel their safety is compromised. Is kinda what they feel.
They haven't come out and said that word for word, but that would be my assumption.
Well, that'd be between the lines. Yeah, that would be what you're saying. No, they're saying, well.
Were you provided the new vest in two thousand sixteen?
Yes.
Okay. Are you wearing that one now?
No.
Okay.
Well, and you had two new hires, right? They have newer than that vest.
You've got three that I've gotten purchased other places.
So as far as your everyday full-time people, you really only have two that are even on the older.
Right. And myself.
Well.
Now, when I talked to the full-time staff about it, and that they took that opportunity to bring that to you, there was some discussion that they were willing to forgive or forego those raises to cover it. So.
Well.
You know, this is, so we have three dead, three active officers, three full-time officers that, that basically you and Bill and there's another one's wearing a kinda five-year-old vest.
Yes.
Yeah. The vest had nine hundred dollars? But all the other vests we're talking about is for the reserves.
Yes.
The big ones. Part-time.
How many reserves and part-timers do you have that work like a regular monthly basis? Are there some that don't? I mean, is there, I guess, as, I guess my question is, is there a way we can, on the vests, order a certain threshold immediately? And then maybe if we need a bulk quantity, order that at a later date, I guess is my thought process. Maybe with a grant.
These are fitted though, per officer, right? So.
So you have to take your officers that are, your reserve or your part-timers that are working the most, fit them first, and then apply for a grant for the ones who are working the least.
So I guess my thought would be if you haven't worked in a certain threshold of months, you don't get a new one and you can't work until we get you any.
Right.
It's kinda my thought, but.
There's a man from one of my reserves that said that you haven't bought me a vest. And I said, well, you haven't done anything either. You don't show up, you don't come in here, you haven't ridden with anybody. So why, why spend a thousand dollars on somebody that's not gonna do anything?
Well, so I guess my, my main concern though is if they're on the road, they have to have it. And it can't be in a gray area, cause when some savvy attorney comes back later and reads a contract, they're gonna look for that gray area in the contract.
And they'll watch his video.
And, right. And so that's, if they're gonna be on the road, they gotta have a vest. It's, there's no question.
So I'm just gonna make a motion that we buy the three, for the three full-time officers who are on the line for.
They're on patrol every, every week, every day.
And they're past their recommended replacement.
Okay. Is there a second?
Well, I, I'm ready to do that. But what about the other reserves? Nick was going down that road.
Yes, I, I think we need to hear from Randy how many reserves he has he thinks he needs to be able to keep working how he normally works.
And how old are their vests?
Most, those that work and have been here for the last few years, they got in two thousand sixteen the same as us. Now, that's only a couple. And.
So if you got five vests, give or take, you'd probably be.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
So five, so we're looking at five thousand roughly.
Three full-time guys and one part-time that works all the time.
And then maybe if the grant comes through, we can get the bigger amount for the rest of our.
Can you do that?
That's just.
Well, I mean, from the, from the liability standpoint, and from the officer's lives too. I mean, it's, it's as wise to do whoever's out there the most right now.
I can just tell you that the attorney is salivating at the idea that there's a gray area.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So we need five vests. So forty-five hundred bucks is what we're looking at.
Two reserves.
Correct?
Yeah. I've got two reserves now that work a lot, but.
Well.
It's one of them back there.
Let's, let's, so your motion was, you want me to file a little?
Um, so do we?
Five, five vests? Is that, I mean, is that what you're saying, Randy? The three full-timed and two, I mean, I'm, I'm asking.
Are you saying two part-time and two reserves?
I thought you were saying three full-time and two reserves.
Three full, two reserves and one part-time.
Six. I make a motion that we buy six vests for the three full-time, the two reserves, and the one part-time that work the most right now.
And you just want him to work out the basics with the commission and himself and get whatever he deems appropriate then?
Also, to let you know, we did check into it August, September last year. The vest partnership grant from the federal government was already past the deadline. And I think those are a percentage grants too. But these ones that I'm looking at are, are full, full paying for it.
Percentage would've been better than no hanging a hundred percent though.
And I just mean that we try to get whoever fits them as soon as possible.
And, and one of the, the grant that I was going after Firehouse Subs, I gotta provide a list of equipment that we do have in inventory, showing what we've done. So that would probably even go forward to show them that, hey, we, we provided what we can, and you help us out with the rest, and they'd probably go for it.
And I guess my motion would also include that he pursue grants for the purchase of other.
So can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now, the fire inspector team, building inspector team, have inspected the police department the other day and found some fails with the department, such as the doors cleaned in instead of out. No smoke detectors present, evacuation routes aren't posted in the three-room building that had one door. Exit sign, signage and lighting, emergency lighting. But there is an exit sign above the door, but it's not lighted. And I don't know what it'd take to do that. But I will try to get those rectified.
Did they have batteries?
It doesn't take batteries, but that's, and I don't think there's a wire to it. So that's what I gotta see if I can find one. Because I know we bought some for the Masonic Lodge that just take batteries and we'd have to replace them every once in a while. And I'll make up a map of escape routes that point the doors right there. And one other thing that he said there was an accumulation of trash in the garage area needing to be taken out. I took that out yesterday to rectify that problem. Did some additional property inspections. There's three new ones. Copies were delivered to the clerk and the town attorney. One of them is a repeat offender every year, and I think we have a current judgment against.
I also have an order where they're not allowed to talk to you with me either.
Okay.
Talk to you.
Uh, we've filed on this person three different times. And then I've had three other legal lawsuits against this person. And so the judge entered a gag order where they're not allowed to defame me publicly.
We had the same one whose father came in here and said, we're just picking on her. We didn't have, there wasn't anything wrong with the property. And I, you've got the photographs every year that it is a problem. So.
So, we're working on that, Randy. On my end.
Yeah, yeah. I sent all those I got ordinances to, to him also a few weeks ago about fees that we can, we can enact and raise some funds. So I guess we just have to wait on a drafting of those for you guys to look at.
Yep, I'm working on it.
This sixth person hiring, we extended the hiring, or the deadline for applications to the twenty-eighth of this month. And we're holding testing on the twenty-ninth. Hopefully to get a few more applications in. And I know that we've got at least one more applying, maybe a couple more. Because we had four people that applied, and two of those, I guess, didn't even show up for the testing at the sheriff department. And two have been passed. So, and we figured they may be trying to hire those too. So we extended ours out a little bit to get some more applications. And I, when I advertised that, I advertised it at the salary of thirty-five thousand, so people know what they're getting into. And I put that you said a three thousand dollar sign-on bonus, but the clerk tells me that you never voted on that. So I don't know. I can clarify that with applicants at the day of testing, but you guys were talking about that.
It was, it was brought up, but we never, we never passed it.
I don't know if you voted, but we talked.
So how do you wanna do it? That's, that's, I just wanna make sure I got the right information to get on.
The only, yeah, the only thing that was passed was the thirty-five thousand dollar salary. No sign-on bonus, no, I, I mean, no guarantees of anything else. Days off, vacation or any, I mean, they'll get that obviously, but.
Yeah, the policy. But, um, so if, if, if it's somebody with experience, they'll throw it in.
I would say as far as hiring on, and then we'll look at it in December. I mean, what, what's you guys' opinion of it?
Yeah.
I thought we wanted to get away from doing this, you know, mid, midterm.
Yeah. Probably be like us in our nurse, we'll never get one.
And might not. After we get that, we're doing testing on the twenty-ninth written and, and the physical testing, and we'll go from there. Oh, there's a push-button lock on the front door, police department. It's been there fifteen years or so. I, they put it on the fire department, the police department at the same time. Well, this one gets used every day multiple times. And it's kinda wore out. I had the locksmith come and clean it up and got it working, cause it was stuck and it wouldn't open. He took a look at it. I had him give me some different options. He, he said to replace that lock was around four fifty. And I asked him about if you just put a deadbolt on it with keys and made thirty keys that can't be duplicated for twenty-five staff and then town board or court treasurer, whoever. That price would be about the same. So he's got it cleaned up and lubricated now, but it's probably not gonna last very long. So I'm gonna ask you what you'd like to do about that.
Any thoughts?
So is that typical push-button locks? I mean, I'd imagine it'd be, of course, it's lasted fifteen years, but I would think that'd be more prone to problems.
The, the nice thing about it is we can change the code on it. So whenever we have a, a different person, we can change the code.
Don't have to get twenty-five keys.
Where if we don't get the key back from them, then we gotta change the key in the, you know, the, the core. So that's kinda the, and, and it is quicker. If you can't find your keys, put the code in and you're in. And we've changed the code twice or three times since I've came on, just because we had personnel changes.
Well, when it goes out, I would go back with a push-button.
Why don't we change it before it goes out?
Well, what are you recommending, Randy? You wanting to change it now, or you're?
Yeah, because if it goes out, then we're locked out.
More or less.
I bet we could make that much with the chili cook-off.
There's a few of us have, uh, runs to work, personally going that way, but. Police commissions meet tomorrow night in executive session.
There you go. So were you making a motion on this, or are you just?
Well, sounds like we need a new door lock. Need a motion for that. I mean, it's a four hundred dollar item.
Well, I mean.
He said it's around four fifty.
Okay.
Does Randy have a, do you have a threshold for sending them?
Well, he has money in the budget for.
I don't know if I always ask.
I'd say good.
Yeah, I mean, he has money in the budget until, first year, you always got a little money. Yeah.
But I just got billed from Double D Tire from September to now.
Yeah, I saw that. Six tires, nine hundred dollars or something. I saw it on the board.
Yeah, well, it was like fourteen hundred dollars for everything. And I'm like, why you wait so long to submit your bills? I.
Have you submitted that one to Randy?
I submitted it last week.
I saw where Double D was paid nine hundred and sixty for four tires on a Chevy truck and two on a Dodge.
Yeah, but there's also.
Then there's another one, yeah. Tire change. There's three ten and nine sixty, yeah.
Was it a total of fourteen hundred or something?
Well, I don't know. Three ten, nine sixty, it's almost there.
But the invoice said from September to now.
Yeah, he's, I guess he bills by angle. He's clearing up his books for you. Uh, must be nice to be able to do that.
Well, I think the tire company, the distributor that provides the tires comes out of Daniel, Illinois. I think they send us a bill separate. So on some of those. So that's why he's just got tire change.
Okay.
Just to keep you updated.
All right. Is that all you got, Randy?
I have a quick question. Who manages assets for the police department? Who manages that inventory?
The inventory? Bill was assigned quartermaster a few years ago, but I've got an inventory. Each officer, when they're issued stuff, they have an inventory sheet that they have to fill out. I get them to update that about once every year or two years. When we issue new equipment, we've added that kinda stuff to the insurance inventory. I can provide you with that inventory that we currently have.
No, I was just curious if it was the police commissioner or if it was within the department.
It's usually them within the department, cause I get stuff from different things. I've got grants from Walmart and, and the community foundation. So, but if it's something of been of value, I've always brought it up and had it, add it to the insurance.
Gotcha. Okay.
Hey Randy, can I ask a question too?
Yes.
About your calls. Do you run an Excel sheet or anything on your, or how do you track your calls?
They go through the CAD, the computer aided dispatch. That's how they're, we have record of them. Plus, if guys draw a case number or an incident number, those are tracked separately along with accident numbers. So we can keep track of amount of accident reports, case reports, incident reports. So if a guy does use some force or something, then, then we, they have to draw a case number for that. And we keep track of things that way. So we do have an Excel sheet that dispatch fills that for us and then provides to me monthly on which reports are out there, or which report numbers have been issued. But then also those CAD summaries that I give you every two weeks that show you how many calls we've had.
Do you?
They're on there too.
Do you, do you share those with the police commissioner?
Yes.
So like, go ahead.
When you say CAD, is that same thing as nine-one-one?
That's, yeah, that's the computer aided dispatch. So that's where all our reports are generated now.
It shows a whole record of things. A, a, a lot of times it shows there's like prior offenses or things like that too for information for them.
We can search a person's name in there and it'll tell us that they've got a suspect, a victim, a reporting party or whatever, uh, addresses, phone numbers.
So do you share those quarterly or is that something the executive officer gets monthly or?
I shared, um, we were getting activity from each officer on a monthly basis. But that is quit coming about six months ago and they're trying to fix that glitch in the computer. But I shared those monthly with the police commission and always shared them with the guys so they could see what they were doing. And it was posted on the walls at the police department. Now those were kind of things I was also bringing you, but I haven't, uh. Like I said, that, that part of the program's been down, so I ran you a summary of all the calls that we had every two weeks. And it just gave these numbers of how many each type of call.
Okay, well, I mean, I'd, I'd like to add those again.
Who's trying to fix it?
Uh, the computer company, the, the, the computer aided dispatch company.
Which is through the county, right?
Yeah.
So the sheriff's department can't run those reports either?
But it shows activity on each officer.
I guess where I was asking, I, also, I mean, does it? I, I mean, I know it reports time, you know, date and time and all that. I mean, is there any, wh- wh- what's? How hard is that to put together, I guess, what I'm asking?
Well, dispatch sends me a, a list of reports every week that we're drawing, all the calls. So I have those, but, um, a lot of that's got confidential information in it, so I don't put those out. But I, the, uh, the numbers of calls and stuff, I can, I can draw that up and print it out, which I forgot to bring today. But I was going to send it to you since, uh, the last meeting, December twentieth, until now. And I looked it up here a minute ago and I was trying to print it out here, but it won't print out from my phone. So, uh, I'll just email those to you.
Okay. I mean, I was just kind of wondering, just curious about, obviously what time of the day, average, like eight, or, you know, our nine-one-one calls come in, um.
There are different reports available on there that you can draw on that, but, um, some of them are, are like per officer or per department and we like the ones per the, per, per the department. I'll see what I can, I can draw out of there on that for like times of day. Now that, that one that I used to send you with the officer's activity, uh, that had times of day on it of reports and what, how many reports types. Like I said, she said she hadn't been able to get them for s- six months or so now, so they're supposed to be fixing that. But this company is historically, uh, slow.
Sounds like it.
Yeah, and we've, we've complained about it. Everybody's complained about it, but, um.
So.
We don't have much say in it.
Since everybody else gets asked questions, I'm gonna ask. I feel like I, how often do you guys have to fill out probable cause paperwork?
Every arrest.
Every arrest, you do a probable cause filing. Okay. Well, you referred to it in your last, our last meeting, your report. I'm like, gee, I wonder how they, 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 they do. Uh, well, I guess the next question, how many darn arrests do you make? I mean, rough.
Those are in the statistics too. I can, I can look that up for you and send it to you. And I thought I had it tonight, but I don't.
Your turn to ask a question, lady.
Yeah, lady, yeah, yeah.
I got nothing.
Come on, you gotta have something.
I mean, I, I don't know. I'm just gonna sit here.
Okay. Steve? Okay.
You ready?
Yeah.
Well, you're done on our track. Okay, thank you.
We had court today on ordinance violations. Uh, we only had one ordinance today, but it was a dog, uh, barking case over on Voorhees. Uh, I think we have it resolved. I've asked the officer that issued the citation to follow up on it. He informed me he would. Um, so good resolution on it. Um, we do have the three new ones that Randy gave me. Um, we're processing those. We'll get court dates on those. I'll advise Randy once we have those. One was a frequent flyer that we've had numerous times on numerous things. Um, it, the main thing I've been working on is the eminent domain on the forty-one North Sewer project. We have our notice that's going to be published in the paper. I'm going to send a written notice to the property owner. Um, basically it just indicates that we've tried to settle outside of this proceeding that we've made, offered. It's competitive based on evaluations and that they haven't accepted the offer, so we're going to proceed under the eminent domain statute. Runs two consecutive weeks and then we have a hearing that can't be within thirty days of the second week. So I've set the hearing for the first meeting in March at seven o'clock, so at the back end of the meeting in March. Um, if they want to object to the eminent domain proceedings, they can appear at that meeting and talk about their objection. Um, but the statute's very clear on this. If they're, they're within four miles of the town, it's a process we have, so. Um, and I, I've got all the statutory requirements in there and everything. And if he wanted to talk to me, I'm sure he could get ahold of me, so, but, you know, it's the process we have to do since negotiations broke down. Um, but anyways, all that's done. I've given the notice to Brandy. She's gonna file it. Um, and I'm just in the personal service, so, so that process is moving along. Um, as you can see, it's about a, uh, front and back, about fifty pages of statute to go through, so that was very fun reading. Um, we have small claims court on the twenty-fifth. This is one we should be paid on and he made promises verbally to the judge that he'd have them paid in full by the twenty-fifth. And that's not something you can really walk back once you've done that. That's very.
Has he paid it all?
I, I haven't checked. Usually I'll check those a couple of days before because most people make those payments about a day or so before court.
Waiting on tax return.
Whatever. I'm, I don't know. Frequent flyer again. Um, John Asbury passed away, as you guys are aware. Um, I did happen to talk with some representatives of the family. They're interested in talking with the town about that property potentially. I told them I thought the town would be interested in talking about that. Uh, hopeful I wasn't speaking out of turn, but that was my understanding. So information to follow on that.
We were interested before. I think we still are.
Yeah, so, um, more to come on that once we've talked with them a little bit. Um, our, um, yeah, I'll just get more information on that. Um. We talked about small claims, talked about ordinances, talked about the eminent domain, talked about that. I think that's everything I have, unless I'm forgetting something.
Okay.
Questions?
Troy, you got any?
I've got enough damage.
I want to thank the police department for what you guys have been doing. I want to thank you guys for fixing water leaks, especially on the weekends. Been there. It's not fun, especially when it's cold out.
Did John have something or is he just here for entertainment?
Well, when you guys were talking about the Anderson Street project, that popped in my mind. Uh, Ace was having trouble with their sewer. I didn't know where we was going to have to come into that mine right there over Anderson. If that needed to be taken care of before we do any new road work.
Yeah, uh, I thought that maybe Doug was looking at going out on Hook Street, but that's something I can talk to him about.
Cause I don't think we ever figured out where their sewer goes to.
Who, Ace?
Yeah.
Well, words. Good question. I mean, what?
Sometimes you don't want to know.
Obviously Rockville Road's on sewer and then the main line's going down to Anderson.
Anderson's a closer and there's a manhole right there at that intersection.
Well, doesn't it dump in there? Can't he tell? Can't you just pull the lid and?
We pulled lid and it didn't look like it dumped in there.
Really? Well.
We died it.
Well, okay, here's some information. Back in the day when Al Gallo built that, the septic tanks on that grass lot back there, it's on the corner. Rockville Road and Hooks, so the original sewer line ran to that lot, so I bet it still goes that direction, goes into the sewer that's on Rockville Road. That's where the original sewer, when he built that before there was sewer out there and went to that lot, because he wouldn't sell that lot forever because it had septic tank on it.
Which lot are you talking about?
Right there behind Jeremy Swing, just east that.
Okay. Okay, yeah, all right.
Yeah, so I bet it runs down.
So there's a, there's a septic tank out there?
There's a tank in there. That's why, cause, well, dad wanted to buy that lot for years and he wouldn't sell it and that was the reason. But finally he sold it, but he said there's a tank on there.
He has an electric meter on that property too, like this.
Well, anyway, it's probably going south.
I would definitely be finding out before we pave that road.
Southeast, southeast towards Rockville Road.
Yeah, cause we wouldn't want to.
Know.
Part of that thing is we have five valves to replace with water grant two, one Anderson.
While you guys maul that over, I got something for the park board. I got a call about the baseball diamonds. Um, they would like a line trenched in there, would like for the town to do it. For, I didn't give them any kind of.
Water?
Well, I guess water ponds on the, on the diamonds.
Oh, drain. You want a water drain.
And they're also talking about fencing, lighting, everything else. Who's responsible for that? I'm just, I mean, they're just asking. The tile, they would obviously like the town to take care of. I mean, the drain if, you know, I mean, I assume that would be you guys taking care of that. I mean, as far as. Are you guys over the diamonds and stuff or?
The park owns.
The ground.
Owns the ground.
Town owns the ground.
The town, yeah, the town and it's under the parks, so, I mean, traditionally, they've never paid anything for it.
But I, I remember when I was on the board, we paid, the board, the, the league paid for the improvements they wanted to do.
I mean.
The tiling.
If they're paying for it.
Since that's a drainage issue.
When are you guys having a meeting?
We don't know yet.
We didn't have a quorum for one and so we haven't sold them.
It'll be soon.
Well.
Sounds like a fun topic to discuss.
Yeah.
There's any way to get away from Thursdays. That's when health board meetings.
Well, I think they're looking at putting fence up. I mean, and paying for that. Um, obviously I don't know what the lighting down there. I haven't been down there for years as far as.
At night.
At night, so, um.
Well, speaking of fun things on my journey, I went to Witamka, which is where hometown went and did their hometown makeover. And I've come up with lots of things for that grant that we're going to work with Mark Davis on.
Boy, it's exciting.
It is. It was.
I knew you were excited about something.
Maybe the grumpy dog.
Yeah, the trails is, I think it's going to be a, a big, a big thing, so. Did you talk to him about any kind of B and R stuff?
I haven't yet. I thought he was maybe going to come to our park board meeting, probably.
This is probably going to be, I'm just going to ask this question, just, I'm sure Lady's not going to be happy about it, but. And I'm not thinking about taking anything down. I'm just thinking about adding. Uh, you are the liaison with Main Street, correct?
Yes, I said I would be, yes.
You're good.
No.
What?
Whatever. I want to hear it. Come on, let's go.
All I want to know is, would there be an issue if we put white lights back up? If they were willing to pay for them? Would there be an issue with us either putting them under the Christmas lights or on top of, you know, two foot one way or the other? Would anybody care? I, I mean. I, I'm asking the question. I mean, if you care, then tell me. If you don't.
I like the white lights for year-round use, um. And I, I, I don't know how it'd look with both of them up there.
I don't think it would look real good.
Well.
I don't think anybody would really pay any attention. I mean, you're not going to have the Christmas lights on.
Well, at night you wouldn't see the dark.
Right, I mean, I don't.
Well, and then I, 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 it's, it's, it's an interesting idea. Um, you might touch base with Main Street and see.
I think I came up with a couple of options. I mean, if they want the white lights, why don't they put them on their tree that they decorate? And or why don't we look at some white decorations to hang on the posts around the square if they're willing to help buy them?
You're talking business.
I think it's more about.
Think it's more about the summer activities. Well, it is what they're talking about, having lights. The festive.
I find nothing festive with the white lights. Everyone's entitled to those.
Okay.
Well, I mean, I'm just, I, you know, I've been asked on, and I'm asking, so I'm.
Right?
Yeah.
Well.
I'm sure I'll be outvoted on that, so I'll just stay vague and go with it and, and go on with my life.
Well, and the whole thing to me is going to be, if, you know, if they're interested in buying them. I mean, so, you know, if they're, if they're not, then it's kind of a dead thing already, but, um.
Well.
When you say buy, I mean, they fully fund it. We just.
Yeah, they, yeah, they fully fund it, so. I mean, obviously we'll supply the electricity or whatever we do, you know, do our thing, so, but, uh.
Who's the president now?
I presume he still was.
Oh, there's a.
Oh, oh, yeah. Okay, I didn't know if it had changed.
Do you go to those meetings yet? I used to until they put them at the same time as your meeting, this meeting.
Well, I have, I don't think I have anything else. Anybody else have a comment or?
Well, you know, something crossed my mind the other day. Uh, it just popped back in. It's already get, it happens that way. Uh, you know, we, uh, uh, well, the value of the service that this, this fellow brings to the videotaping these meetings and, uh. Uh, he's a nonprofit. I, uh, uh, I don't know if it's appropriate. I don't know if it's legal, but I would encourage if it is legal for any, any, uh, 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 support that the towns can provide or county, make a donation annually. I don't know if there's anything wrong with that. I mean, it, it's, it's.
You want me to investigate that?
Well, I'm sorry.
Is that like lobbying?
No, lobbying, no. I'm saying that, that, that this value of this service that this fellow provides is just huge. I mean, anybody, go online. I don't know how many of you watch the videos, but.
How many different courses?
It's very, very, there's a. There's a legal recording of everything that happens here and if there's any questions.
You make in Monazuma too down there?
He does Monazuma, does.
Both counties.
But any, eh, I, I just think it's a, a great service and, you know, eh, eh, if we can.
So basically six.
Help support a little bit. It, it's nice to have.
Let me just throw this out there too. Having that also helps us comply with our, our A D A and our title.
Yeah?
Title four.
Well, that's interesting. So I mean, it's such a great service that I think it's really underappreciated and I sure do, uh, uh, try to find time to watch our meetings and, uh, see what I said and, 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 you know, eh, eh, it's good. I've watched a few other boards. And it is really nice. Uh, so next, see if there's any issue. He's a nonprofit.
Can I go on record and say he's the bane of my existence?
Well, yeah, but, uh, anyway, yeah.
I can research if you'd like me to and make sure we can do that. I, I think we probably can, but.
It'd probably be more in favor if you could make me look younger and.
I do have one more legal question since we're on that topic. And I think I know the answer, but I'm asking. Uh, to serve on a town, a town board that we appoint.
As an appointment.
Do you have to be a resident of Rockville?
So it depends on which board it is, but generally, yes.
Okay.
Um, each, what, so you have multiple boards that, some boards have statutory basis for the appointments and other boards don't, like advisory boards, things like that. For instance, your police commissioner and your park board's governed by Indiana code. And so whatever it says in the codes, what, what the gospel is.
Cemetery board. We just had a resignation in cemetery board. I think probably what he's asking.
I would have to look. Uh, I don't believe there's a, I don't know, there might be. I guess I'd have to say maybe on the cemetery board.
Well, only one, one member of the town council could serve on that board.
Yeah, so it's probably governed by Indiana code if that's the case then.
By the cemetery, right?
Well, I think we, I mean, I personally think we should always, if we have a choice, go with somebody that's in the town.
Well, I agree, but.
If you got us, if you just stall for a second.
Any of you guys going to serve on a cemetery board?
Troy doesn't want in town.
I'm out of town.
Was it considered your, um, in the township too though? I mean. In the old cemetery, harvest, not even in the town limits, so. Yeah.
I'm a dog.
Has anybody reached out to Mary Johani? She might have some interest.
Well, I'm sure she would, but I hate to lean on the older. She asserts so much over a lot of her own.
It's not a conversation. She'll say yes or no.
Well, eh, eh, certainly it's a viable object.
But it'd be nice to involve new people.
Well, yeah, someone younger that'll be there after we're all gone perhaps and has, can carry the torch of. Well, yeah, someone younger that'll be there after we're all gone perhaps, and has, can carry the torch of, share the stories.
Well, so the other thing is typically where your positions come from is people that get involved in that, you know, I mean, I, I think you started in the park board, right? And now you're here and I don't know where everybody else.
Well, that's another point, you know, if you get someone, yeah, anyway.
Once you get them involved, maybe they'll take on.
Well, what we do, it's all trap, it's a trap, see what happens.
It is a trap, yes. It's a trap.
Okay, so, you going to research that for me?
Yeah, I can let you know, I would assume you have to be a resident of the town, but that may not be true.
Okay, well, anybody want to make a motion to adjourn or are we done? On favor?
Aye.